Good evening and welcome to the July 17th meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the side counter along with request to speak cards. A reminder to everyone that the request to speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission, please write the item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes and we will put the timer on this evening. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. Thank you. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Moore.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America, in the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first off, we have presentations rather public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission, and I have a request to speak from Rick Hart.
Just respectfully ask if items five and six either can be reversed or can be at least weighted to you. Rule on five until you heard six, so I'd at least like to speak my piece before the final gavel goes down. That's my only request, if that's possible.
Okay, thank you. Correspondence and staff communications from our Planning Commission Secretary, Mr. Tilly?
Yes, thank you Chair Perez. Few items of note tonight. You should have received a memorandum from Kathy Allen regarding items five and six. Several letters regarding the projects have come into us earlier today and late yesterday, and so we have those for you this evening. We also received this evening tonight, there appears to be like a Google X excerpt here, it's regarding agenda item number two, which was received by one of the members of a community that's present here this evening. And then also, I want to make sure that yourselves and everyone has the corrected version of our agenda tonight. It's noted with the corrected in all caps at the top. There was some typographical errors regarding agenda item number six with the project description was not the accurate one, however, we produced this corrected version and placed it in the box downstairs and was noticed properly. So, I want to make sure everyone has that, but the agenda order remains the same, thus far at least, and so that concludes my correspondence tonight.
Thank you.
I personally don't have a copy and I don't know if any of the commissioners--
I don't think any of us have the corrected copy.
Essentially, the project description for item number five was replicated under item number six, and so we should have corrected version for you that has the accurate description for item number six.
Okay, next off, disclosure of expertise communications. I'll start off to my left.
None to report?
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. I've had communication with the applicant for number four and prior communications with the applicant for number six.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
I've talked with the applicant on five and six and a few neighbors in the area of those.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Moore?
None to report.
I have none to report as well. Next off, consideration and approval of the minutes from our June 19th meeting.
Are you taking these separate, or are we taking the consent agenda at the same time, the whole consent agenda?
No, we'll take them separately.
Okay. I move approval of the June 19, 2014 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I have some requests to speak for item number two, so do I move that to the consent agenda? I mean, to the regular agenda, or?
It doesn't need to, but we can still take public comment on it.
Okay.
And if the commission would like to hear a staff report, we are prepared to do so.
Okay, could we please hear the staff report first?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Seamus Laffey. He's a junior planner on our staff that has started with us here in the last, you know, couple of months, and so we're excited to have him on board, and so our new junior planner, Seamus, will present this item.
Good evening, members of the commission. Staff recently received a building permit application for a freestanding deck out at Bridgeway Lake. Okay, if you can, so this is... Picture of the freestanding deck, there it is. So staff received this building permit application about a month ago, and we've been internally discussing and struggling with how to deal with it because the zoning ordinance does not have any specific language referencing freestanding decks. So this prompted a larger policy review by staff for how freestanding decks would be regulated throughout the city, and after internal review, the zoning administrator made an interpretation that freestanding decks are detached accessory structures when they are tall enough to require a building permit, which is 30 inches in height, and this deck right here is more than 30 inches in height, which is why it submitted a building permit application. And as a detached accessory structure, freestanding decks would be subject to setback requirements. The setback requirements for detached accessory structures in the R1B zone, which is the zoning of the, for the area along Bridgeway Lake, is 10 feet from the rear and 5 feet from the side. If the commission does not agree with this interpretation, another option would be to determine that freestanding decks are not detached accessory structures. If this is chosen by the planning commission, freestanding decks will not be subject to setbacks and they will be able to locate anywhere on the property.
Essentially, there's, you know, the logic in front of you is sort of, you know, twofold, you know? Is the structure of this nature a structure by how the city defines structures? Then if so, it's fairly clear that this is detached, you know, from the main residence, and it would certainly appear to be accessory, you know, to the residence that's on the property. So, in our estimation, this particular project, as has been described and submitted on the building permit application, you know, is indeed a structure by our, how our municipal code defines a structure, and thus, it also does not meet any of the exceptions that are available under the detached accessory structure section of the zoning ordinance. And so thus, it is our, we're seeking ratification of zoning administrator interpretation that this isn't, a structure of this nature is indeed subject to setback requirements as a detached accessory structure. Even, also is important for the commission to consider that even though this particular matter has prompted this discussion, you know, any type of interpretation in this manner would be applicable, you know, beyond this property. So, we're asking the commission to, you know, consider this somewhat in the abstract even though this particular matter has prompted, you know, this review. So with that, Seamus and myself will be happy to answer any questions.
Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? I will open to the public. I'll take Nazila Nikchi. If you would please come up, state your name.
Good evening, member of commission. I'm Nazila Nikchi, and thank you for the time. I won't take your line. I just would like to mention a few things. We are living in a same society, working, living with each other, but we all need our space and privacy, and nobody likes these boundaries to be broken. We are the next neighbors of the owners of these structures, and I'm here for myself. I have a child to protect and for future owners of this house, if we're not living there anymore. If this structure is going to be built, it affects our privacy very much, our property value and our view of lake. If you notice, this place, this particular house is located in a very close angle toward our house. It's 45 angle, and any structures or extending the yard will affect our privacy, will come forward to our yard, toward our yard. And if somebody comes to our house, we'll see, we can see this deck and they can see us. I'm not saying anybody will sit there and watch us all the time, but it's something that I don't feel comfortable with it, and nobody, I believe, feels comfortable with that one. I'm a lady, I don't blame the owner. He's a gentleman. He apparently doesn't see it from my eyes. He has a different point of view of privacy, but I don't like it and I feel very uncomfortable. I like every neighbor, everybody, to enjoy and get the most and best of their properties and their views, but not in expense of others' discomfort. I respect, we do respect others' rights, and I expect others to do so. I don't blame him. He is coming here, he's very new to this community, he has very big ideas in his head, but as I spoke to him before and gave him my concern, I thought he's very considered and he might reconsider his plan. It's very sad that I have to come here and spoke in front of you, it shouldn't be this way. But again, I don't feel right, I don't think it's right to do so. We don't do that, we don't do anything to block their view, to damage their privacy, and I didn't expect so. Thank you very much, that's it.
Thank you. Brian Falkenhainer?
Hi, good evening. My name is Brian Falkenhainer, I live at 3810 Mendocino Court, which is the property immediately adjacent to this property on the south side, which is the left. So whereas the prior speaker is on the upper side, I'm on the left side of the picture. So I just wanted to make three quick points here today. The first one is that I'm here in support of the zoning administrator's recommendation. I know that they have talked to all of us a fair amount over the last few weeks, and while I would prefer there be no deck at all, I do think that they've made a, you know, a good objective assessment of the situation, and I think it's a good compromise, so it is something that I can support. The second point I want to make is what would happen to me if you rejected your zoning administrator's recommendation? And so, what is being proposed here, and as you can see, it's on a 45-degree angle with the adjacent properties, and what is being proposed is a very large deck that looks into the entirety of the back of my house. So from my kitchen, my living room, my family room, this stairs right into the back of my property and into the back of my house. And so to maintain any sense of privacy, I would need to build a fence along the left side of that picture, and because we are on a downslope here, you can see the deck extends up in the air quite a bit because it's going out level and you have a downward slope, I've measured that out. For me to maintain a six-foot privacy fence with this deck, I would need to build a fence that is 11 feet tall when you get down to the waterline. And so if you reject your zoning administrator's recommendation, I am then going to need to apply for permit to put in an 11-foot fence, and I would expect you to approve it because you cannot make an exception for this and then deny me my privacy. Which gets to my third point, is this the kind of nonsense you want going on around this lake? Big decks, big fences, propagating their way all around this lake, it will destroy Bridgeway Lakes. And so, as was indicated at the beginning, while this is a single instance, there is a precedent here, and so I would urge you not to set that future in motion and to go ahead with the very hard work that your zoning administrator has done and ratify the recommendation. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Cameron Adili and I live on the adjacent side of his property, 3605 Coyote Road. We've been living there for six years, we love the place, we love the community, and we're very glad we chose, we've been, I've been Neola County for like 28 years, so long resident here. One point I want to make is I do support the staff recommendation for making a, considering a deck as a structure and having setbacks. Also, there were other members or other, excuse me, neighbors along the lake that I spoke with, and you may see a kind of a signature that, from about another, I'm not sure, eight members, nine members, seven, that they signed, they agreed with this recommendation after they saw what the staff report is, and then they signed a petition, if you want to call that a petition, and this was just on yesterday pretty much. Our house, again, is situated at a 45-degree angle. If you can see with the Google map that we have provided you, the way the yard, his yard or his fences, coming towards us, it's really angled towards our view, and by him building any kind of a structure that's going to be, say, four foot high plus another three or four foot of, you might say, railings, our view is going to be totally blocked from that area. We cannot see the lake from there. No one should be impeding on anybody else's privacy or at the same time, property value as a neighbor. We shouldn't be doing that. We've been very conscious about not putting any hedges, any, anything, because he has a view from our side of the property along the edges, if you can see from the pictures, the one that I provided. Therefore, we just, we don't really want him. I asked him, please, if he could reconsider this and not go ahead with this, but that is his choice. We're just hoping that there would be some kind of a compromise. But again, if any kind of deck is going to be built there, the same as what Brian said, we, as my wife just spoke, we're just very uncomfortable. He may sell the house and leave, and some, excuse me, some other person who comes may be doing something there, you know, we're not feel comfortable with. Or we may sell and it's going to reduce our property value tomorrow. They're going to say, hey, you don't have a view here. This is not how this thing was intended, the structure was not there, we bought it as it was, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm one of the owners at 3800 Mendocino, and I'd like to talk about two minor, or two things that they have both brought up, which is view and privacy. Going with the view first, I strongly disagree that we are blocking their view with the deck that is roughly, you know, 5% of that angle that they have, and with both of our neighbors being, or bringing up the fact of the view, both of them, as you can see, you can't see the left side, I don't know if you guys have a picture of that, but both of them have trees. So you'd have to look through the trees on the, the one that you can see here in the picture to even see our deck. So I just, you know, that's one of the things that we've looked at when he's making that Since we moved there six months ago, we've had our paddle boat up against the fence. He's never came, him and his wife have never come and talked to us about the paddle boat being there and destructing their view in that way either. Our neighbors look right through a shared fence across our yard and say that the deck would be in their view, but the only reason you can see the deck is that the angle is, or excuse me, the fence is see-through. And our neighbors mentioned building a 11-foot fence to maintain the privacy, however, they've already started the building. They have zip-tied tall wood posts, I guess you could call it, so they are already planning on doing that, which is roughly the same thing as we have, which is boards and sticks in the ground this far. Mentioning privacy, we live on a lake that is open, pretty much, to anybody that lives on the lake. You can see the bridge in the background, people walk across the bridge and can see into our backyards at any kind of time they want, people who paddle boat around. I think when you move into Bridgeway Lake's area, you kind of know that there is a way of being able to look into your backyard if you really wanted to. Neither myself nor my boyfriend, who owns the home with me, have, I feel, made any kind of indication that we are out there peeping into other people's backyards, so I feel kind of offended. And to mention, you know, how we're higher up and looking into their backyard, our neighbors on the right side to this picture have a balcony that looks directly down into our backyard as well, so, you know, that argument, it could be made on both sides. They could view from above and I guess we could view from our deck, even though all we want to do is just enjoy the lake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time this evening. So what you have in front of you is pictures. We went out on the paddle boat and we drove around the lake, and we took pictures of anything that's similar. On exhibition B on the bottom right is the exact deck that's seven houses down from us, that we are mocking, that we saw that, we said this is awesome, and we wanted to do the same thing. It's been approved by the board and by the city of West Sacramento. Same with on Mendocino Court, which is only four houses over, is very similar, and it's similar to what we want to do too, and that's been approved by the city already. So they've set the precedence to, you know, allow these. They've been there for the past couple of years. Everybody's, knows what you sign up for when you move out there, and the main thing is we just kind of want to do what's fair, and we feel what's fair is the precedent has been set. You know, I think when it talks about the technicalities of a structure and it being 10 feet back, the setbacks, I don't think they take into consideration that we live on a lake. I think, you know, that might be a little more for the general suburb, and us being on a lake, I feel is, you know, a bit of a different circumstance. It's, you know, 3% to 5% of the West Sacramento community, it's actually 145 houses. We've already paid $338 going through the process, doing everything correct to follow what our neighbors have done. We also paid an additional $700 for a required geotechnical engineer to approve that the setbacks only be three feet from the wall, and that is to make sure that the integrity of the wall isn't sacrificed. So we're already $1,000 into it, and we have bought some stakes to kind of measure things out. We're trying to do everything by the book, by the code, what everybody else did to get their decks up. And unfortunately, we're running into some hurdles with, you know, neighbors that aren't looking around the lake and seeing what's going on and what's been approved. But I do look out my window every day, because that's where my master, that's pretty much my master bedroom faces that, and seven houses down, right in front of that bridge, is on exhibition B in the bottom right is that deck that has been approved, and I see that every day I wake up and I see mine, and I hope it gets to that point, and, you know, the precedent has been set. And, you know, I looked out on the, on the lake with the maps, Google Maps, and there's seven other decks out there. There's also 24 other, either where they removed dirt and they made it level, but it's also, you know, a deck in that sort, it's just not raised, and, you know, we have 24 either walkways and decks and seven that are raised, so I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close public comment and go back to the commission. Do you have any questions for staff?
So, I guess I have a question, David, when we talk about this exhibit, this was given to us. Is this correct, there have been similar projects approved identifying the three-foot setback as acceptable?
Well, what's curious about, there's one reference to a building permit in here in Coyote, what's curious about it is that there's no zoning review indicated from our permit system on that particular one. We'd have to see if any other building permits had been issued for any of these other particular things. Some of these do appear to be flatwork, which typically would not require building permits or be subject to setbacks. What's most curious is the one on the first page in the upper left on Mendocino Court. It's, we'd have to see if any building permits were ever, you know, issued for that one. And I'm, I have become aware of the Coyote one recently, and wondered how that happened without any zoning review of that. But regardless, you know, what's before us tonight is bigger than any given particular lot, we certainly recognize that, you know, the Bridgeway Lake's neighborhood is probably where something of this would be most likely, you know, to go in. However, you know, in our estimation, you know, based on how we define a structure, that this, what is before us tonight or what has prompted this is indeed a structure, and then the subject to the detached accessory, you know, structure setbacks.
That's due to the 120, to the size?
Well, that's, that's part of it, when you get into building permit territory, but the definition of structure, you know, describes that it's, you know, anything constructed that has a, you know, permanent fixture to the ground to where, you know, it is not open and unobstructed. And so, that's where the difference is, comes in with, you know, flatwork, where it's essentially, you know, people will put in pavers or concrete, you know, on the ground. You know, this is a different animal, it requires some form of footings to support it, and that's what, you know, the building division is reviewing, you know, primarily with this. So, the 120 square feet is part of it, but also the height of it is also part of where we're into building permit territory.
David, what is that height limitation? I didn't want to flip through it again.
I'm sorry, height limitation?
What is the height limitation that triggers that building permit?
Oh, for decks, it's 30 inches.
30 inches?
Yes.
And what's the current proposed height of the deck portion?
I believe it's four feet at its highest point.
Oh.
Measured from the water?
Well, from the, well, essentially from the ground. As you see, you know, this particular deck, you know, from the photos, obviously, you know, comes out, you know, as the, as the ground, you know, starts to slope down, you know, toward the lake, so in a way, it, you know, provides a sort of level platform over the slope portion of the ground.
Commissioner Austin, do you have any questions for staff?
None of this time, thanks.
Commissioner Lebig?
No further questions.
David, I'm just not sure, I mean, we know we have others out there now. I didn't know we had any out there. But some of these are level with the ground? But some of these are level with the ground. Are they in the setback area? Does that make a difference, or?
Well, not everything, I think, in these photos is really the same, you know, the same thing. You know, some of these appear to be concrete, you know, flat work, which many people in Duner-Bridgeway Lakes, to sort of give them a little easier path, you know, down to the water, you know, for a boat or what have you. Couple of these, you know, are definitely, you know, a different animal, you know, from that.
I mean, I'm kind of looking at Mendocino, and I'm not sure that that's going to be 30, 40 inches off the ground, but of course, I can't tell.
Yeah, and I can't tell either if that's a 30-inch, you know, or not, but that is the threshold, and there are a lot of 29.5-inch decks, you know, out there, once people find out about the 30-inch, you know, threshold. This is, this is one we have to, to look at, to see if any building permits were ever done for this particular one. On Mendocino, I was not aware of this one previously, and then I was aware of the one on Coyote recently. But, you know, some of these here definitely require some further, you know, further discussion, but obviously, what's before us tonight is beyond just this particular lot. It's this type of, how does the zoning ordinance apply to this type of thing, for lack of a better term, if we aren't sure we're going to consider it a structure, you know, yet?
If there's a conclusion that these other two, the one on Mendocino and Coyote, are similar to what's before us, will those be grandfathered in, or will you go back and take a look at taking similar action?
I would caution the Planning Commission to refrain from speculating as to whether the pictures that have been presented to you tonight are illegal conforming uses or not. To the extent they are not conforming uses, they may be subject to code enforcement and abatement.
I'm not sure how the Commission is leaning on this, so I just, I know I didn't make the comment yet, just, just to give my thoughts. There, there does need to be a trigger, I think, for when a deck becomes a structure. And I think a height, the height is, the height and size is my biggest concern. If 30, 30 inches seems to be the limit, seems to be inappropriate, my recommendation would be, if this has been approved by the HOA Board, if that's the board that was referenced, and it seems to be inappropriate, or, I'm sorry, previously approved, that's not what we're looking at right, what, the only thing we're looking at right now is whether or not this is a structure. So, 30 inches seems reasonable to me to be considered a structure. So, I would consider it a structure. I would just recommend lowering the height to 29 and a half inches, as long as that doesn't mess up their building permits. But generally, the, the, the deck seems approvable, but that's the HOA's decision, not ours. And I do believe anything over 30 inches could be considered a structure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions. I just look to my Commission for motion.
I move we ratify the zoning administrator's action.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion passes.
Any interested party may appeal the decision, the Planning Commission's matter, to the City Council by file a written appeal with the City Clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and that appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Okay, moving on, I'll go to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Hearing Regarding Oak Harbor Freight Conditional Use Permit.
Yes. Associate Planner Kathy Allen will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman Perez and members of the Commission. The applicant is proposing to operate a truck terminal facility at this location, which is located on the north side of F Street. It's in an area predominated by small cross-dock facilities and small warehouses. The use is considered a prohibited use in the M1 Zone. The site has been utilized by several businesses over the course of its history as a truck terminal, most recently by Sterling Trucking, who vacated the premises in late 2013. The applicant is requesting this conditional use permit for the facility to allow for the continued use as a truck terminal pursuant to Municipal Code Section 17.51, which concerns nonconforming uses in the city. Since freight terminals are not permitted in the M1 Zone, the application is being entertained tonight as a substitution of a nonconforming use of a same or more restrictive nature. The project was submitted on May 8th and deemed complete on June 6th. Staff requested the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing, certify that the Class One Categorical exemption is the appropriate level of CECL review, and approve the requested CUP. This concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also in the audience, if you should have any questions of him.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, does anybody have questions for staff? Okay. Commissioner Moore?
Kathy, I didn't understand Condition Number Five, and I just, I don't think I've ever seen this before. It says, "Prior to the issuance of a business license, any and all money owed on the project's work order accounts shall be paid in full." What are we dealing with?
This is something we're trying to get, you know, a little better at. Most of these projects, we work on a deposit and reimbursement basis, and so, we, but we want to make sure that all, any, any fees that are owed to us are paid before any portion of the project proceeds. And since, you know, sometimes some of the billing, there's a little bit of lag in there, you know, we, we can't always get everything, you know, paid up prior to the hearing, which would be ideal. So, we want, and given that this is a situation where they will not need any building permits or any further work, and they can occupy the site as is, their business license issuance is the only check we have to make sure that they have paid us all the fees that are owed for our work on this project.
But they pretty much just moved down the road, right?
Well, it is true, but we under, for all conditional use permits, we, the fees on those are not flat, they're on a deposit and reimbursement basis.
Well, I guess the reason I was asking, I mean, they're already there.
Well, we are aware that they have moved in, you know, we're trying to move, that's partially why we tried to move this to the Planning Commission as quickly as possible for your consideration. We originally became aware of this on a business license application that came to us, and so, we've tried to bring this forward to you in the, as quickly as possible.
It's just something new that we've added, though, kind of?
Well, it is our administrative policy that those, you know, costs, you know, be, you know, covered, but there's sometimes some lag in the billing, so we just want to make sure that's there.
I'm happy to collect the money, David. I just didn't know, I've just never seen that, I don't think. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask any questions?
Sure.
So, my, my question's related to Findings Number One. Just out of curiosity, so I, I see that in the general plan, we're, we're moving towards changing this area to a more residential, specifically high residential use. I'm wondering about the time limit that it references. I didn't see it specified that, for example, it says a conditional, a conditional approval, a condition of approval, which contains a time limit for use, and I'm wondering what that is?
Oh, and Special Condition Number Two references an expiration date that, you know, at this point, we're recommending, you know, three years from tonight, assuming your Commission were to approve this matter, and by then, we will know where we are going general plan-wise, and then we can revisit this at that time.
That was my question.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to speak first, have anything to say?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Harry Hetty of Hetty Design and Associates, address 8495 Garden Street, Rancho Cucamonga, California. I'd like to start off by thanking both Sandra White and Kathy Allen for their assistance in bringing this to your, to tonight's hearing. We are ready to accept all conditions. I didn't until yesterday get to read that there was a three-year limit on our conditional use permit. So, I, prior to tonight's meeting, I had talked with Kathy, paid an extra fee that we knew we had to pay to County of Yolo for $50, got that check out of the way, made our deposit of a couple thousand dollars per Sandra White back in May. And today, I requested, after seeing that three-year limit on our conditional use permit, if it was approved, I asked if, one year from now, potentially, there may be some progress on your 2035 general plan, and we would have two years after that to be back in front of you and do this one more time to get an extension on a yearly basis. And I would just request that potentially you give us the five years. We wouldn't ask for any more than that, and if things change, you know, I, I don't know if your 2035 will be done in, within the next year, as it represents in the presentation I've read. But we would, we're not a, we're not turning down the three years you're giving us, we're just requesting that if you could extend that out till 2019, it's now to 2017, and that would be the only thing, and I thank you very much for all your time and your, if there's any questions for me, I can surely answer those at your request.
Okay, thank you. Do the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
I'll close the public hearing. Do we have any questions for staff? No? Questions, comments?
I, I guess the comment is, what did you think about his request, David?
We would not object to five years if that was within the Commission's desire.
Because we're probably that far out before development would come, or?
Well, we would expect to finish the general plan in roughly a year from now, and so, even if we did change the zoning in this area to residential, it doesn't mean that all of a sudden, all the uses would just, you know, disappear and be replaced by housing, you know, right away. But we just wanted to put, at least set an initial time limit on this right now while the general plan is still being finished, so that, once the general plan is complete, we can revisit, you know, this particular proposal.
Can I add a compromise? Because I was going to actually request, or first ask, why annual extensions? Annual seems to make us busy. If we could extend it to, say, every two years, would, would that be sufficient? And if we did that, what if we compromised and went to 2018, did a four-year permit and then extensions, two-year extensions?
I think you could make extensions longer than one, can't you, David?
Well, certainly, yeah. We've, you know, we've sort of crafted this based on some other projects, you know, Commission has considered. It is, I think, is an important distinction that we are talking about, you know, a nonconforming use. It's presently not allowed in this zone already, but since this site has been used for this, and it's been less than a year since the prior tenant vacated, that they can go in under this conditional basis and as a substitution on conforming use. So, under our current general plan and zoning, this use is not supposed to be there already, but since it has been used this way historically, we can entertain it under this basis. So, we, the one year can be in there, certainly with the being the Commission's discretion to add additional time to that when that comes. What we're most concerned about is this initial period of the next few years, and then we can revisit it then, and the Commission could do additional years at that time if it chose to.
So, we're five years out anyway, if we go to that, at that point, if we wanted to add an extra?
Well, yeah.
During the initial review?
Yeah, and any time, and a time extension request comes back, you could add additional time to it beyond just, there's no necessarily any specific limit. We just didn't want, we didn't want the first one to go out, you know, too far.
Four years. I'd make a motion that we approve the recommended action, but make the condition, or the review process not come till four years out, which would be 2018.
Take a motion.
Joe Second.
Joe Second. Commissioner Galvin Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you.
Any interested party may appeal the decision, the Planning Commission, this matter to the City Council by file a written appeal with the City Clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Okay, on to Item Number Four, Public Hearing Regarding the Resolution 14-3 PC, Recommending Approval of the First Amendment to West Riverview LLC Development Agreement.
Senior Planner Sandra White will present this item.
Good evening, Chair person Perez and members of the Planning Commission. West Sac Rivers is requesting an extension of a development agreement regarding the River Space Two project. The development agreement covers a vesting tentative subdivision map covering approximately 63 acres and a five-acre site located east of Fountain Drive and south of the Regatta condominiums. The map includes a 12-acre site for a future school located at the northwest corner of Lighthouse Drive and Fountain Drive. Although this is a sep, this is separate and apart from the proposed amendment that is before you, it is public knowledge that the school district did approve a public charter school for the site last year, and the developer will be requesting, or seeking, City Council approval to develop a public charter school of seven acres and the remaining five acres with housing. Relative to the development agreement, it was executed in 2006, and at that time, the River Space Two project was owned by West Riverview, Riverview LLC. The five-acre site was transferred to the State of California in 2010, and the 63 acres were transferred to West Sac Rivers in 2012. Since the state is not a party to this proposed amendment, the amendment would only affect the 63 acres owned by West Sac Rivers. The development agreement is set to expire June 14, 2016. The developer is requesting that the agreement be amended to, extended to June 2021. Since the developer purchased the property in 2012, additional time is needed to construct the infrastructure that is needed to support the project and allow the developer time to develop the project as it was approved. Since all the findings can be met, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing, fine that the River Space Two EIR is the appropriate level of environmental review for the project, and that none of the conditions requiring additional environmental review described in CECL Glide Lines 15162 exist, and approve Planning Commission Resolution 14-3 PC, recommending that the City Council approve Ordinance 14-10 regarding a request to amend the West Riverview LLC Development Agreement. I'm available to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have, and also the developers in the audience are available to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have as well.
Do we have any questions for staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to come up and speak?
Chair Perez, members of the Commission, thank you for hearing this tonight. My name's Clifton Taylor, I'm Vice President, Richland Communities, representing the applicant and owner of the rivers. We appreciate staff's time and recommendation on this. We're, you know, we're basically, you know, concurrent with their recommendation. We're pleased to answer any questions you have about the project. I know we haven't been before you since the project, since we took ownership, largely because, you know, we intend to move the project forward, you know, as it was originally approved, and it's been stalled out from, you know, market conditions, and, and so, we're excited about moving the project forward, you know, where the prior owner left off, and hopefully, you know, with this approval and others, we'll get a charter school built and, and see activity commence next year.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I just want to say, thank you for moving forward. Real excited to see it happening.
Okay, thank you. I have one other request to speak. Peter Stone?
Thank you, Chair Perez and members of the Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Commission this evening. I'm Peter Stone, Chief Business Officer of Delta Elementary Charter School, whose governing board is Friends of Clarksburg Schools. As noted in the background section that Sandra read, Washington Unified School District last November approved our charter to open Lighthouse Charter School on the property that we're talking about. But by the terms of our approved charter, we must open and be teaching children August 2015. So, we've been having good meetings with the city staff and the developer to make sure we're able to both cost-effectively and timely obtain the transfer to Friends of Clarksburg Schools Lot 504, or a portion of it. While our governing board wanted the transfer to be the full 12 acres, they wanted me to convey their support for this request to extend the developer agreement and to request that the transfer to the school be no less than a net of seven acres. And I want to thank you for the help that we've received from all the city staff that- we've worked with, in particular Marty Tuttle, Charlene Hamilton, David Tilly, Sandra White, and Mark Collier. And we're looking forward to continuing to work with the city and the developer in the goal, to achieve the goal of teaching children on that site, August 2015, in the Lighthouse Charter School. So, thank you very much for this opportunity and your time.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Take it back to my commissioners. Do we have any questions or comments for staff? Okay, Commissioner Moore?
Sandra, I, when we do Resolution 14-3, is there something in here about the school that I'm missing?
No, the resolution only deals with amending the development agreement. The school issue is separate and apart from the amending the development agreement. So, that's why it's not referenced in the resolution.
We don't, I, I don't understand how we transfer the rights to another school, then.
We're not transferring the rights to the school as part of this. We're only amend, we're only being requested to extend the development agreement for an additional five years for the property that's owned by West Sac Rivers. That's all this being, that's all this being, that's all this before this commission.
The city council will take up a matter related to the school at one of their meetings, you know, next month.
So, they talk about the school. Will we ever see the school? I mean, is, I mean, we'll see the school when it's built, but I mean, are we going to see a built school? Are we going to see just a bunch of trailers? Or do we know yet?
You're going to see, what I've been informed, their plans are to start with tray portables, be portables.
Okay. But our issue is just extending it for a couple years.
That's correct.
Commissioner Brown, no?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Sandra in particular, because I really kind of had a lot of questions and made her dig through the EIR all over again and sent me the EIR. So, thank you very much for the packet and for all of your help. That was it.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Chair, is it possible for us to open the public hearing for items five and six together? And then, just point of reference, does that mean that we will take comments together for items five and six at the same time?
The commission may open the public hearing for both items five and six at the same time and accept comments on item five at one time and then accept comments on item six. At that point, after all questions have been asked and everyone's had an opportunity to comment, the commission can then close the public hearing and deliberate on each item separately. And just as a reminder, we will need separate and distinct findings regardless of the commission's decision on each item.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so I had a request that we listen to both at the same time, so I will go ahead and we'll listen, we'll hear staff's report on item number five first.
Okay, yeah, we will, I will be doing the presentation on both of these items tonight, so I'll, I'll start with item number five, which is the Crown Castle project. And if you wish, after that, we can do some questions before I move on to item six. And then we'll open a public hearing on both, and then close public hearing on both, and then deliberate individually. So, that'll be our game plan. So, item number five tonight on the agenda is a, an application filed by Crown Castle Wireless for a telecommunications facility that's proposed at 1245 Linden Road. This is approximately one-acre site on the south side of Linden, near the east end of the road as it approaches South River Road in the South Port area. The project includes an approximately 125-foot-tall monopine facility with associated ground equipment. This would be a site that could accommodate as four to five individual wireless carriers on it with their related facilities. This is a project that was first submitted to us, you know, back in February of this year, and we have been working on it since that time, including several stops before the planning commission about this project and the item number six project earlier this year, as well as, we recall, we had the discussions regarding potential amendments to the wireless policy that were ultimately heard and approved by city council. This is a project that staff is recommending approval of this tonight because we believe that the required findings can be made for the project. It is important to note that this particular project, as with the other one, does not, you know, meet the setback requirements that are in our, in particular, our wireless policy. However, the applicant has submitted coverage maps from, related to the various carriers that are, were proposed to go on the facility, you know, that would show that without a facility in this area, there would be a significant, you know, gap in wireless coverage. And under federal law, we cannot prohibit in directly or indirectly closing those types of coverage gaps when there's a demonstrated need. So, in this particular manner, strict application of our wireless policy, particularly the setback provision, would likely result in this effective prohibition, which we cannot do under federal law. So, the changes to the wireless policy that the commission considered and the city council ultimately approved reflected this notion to where on case-by-case basis, where federal law would preempt strict application of our wireless policy, the commission would consider those projects individually. As has been the commission's past practice, the applicant has provided their evidence to us at our prior hearings that they have carriers that are signed up and are prepared to locate on this particular facility. And so, so, under that particular premise, and with the applicable federal law and the demonstrated access to the site from a public street and access to utilities, staff is recommending approval of this particular project this evening. Subsequently to when the environmental document was released, the project was revised minor, a minor amount to increase the height to potentially include a fifth carrier. There pursuant, as described here in the staff report pursuant to the sequel guidelines, the commission can consider that particular tonight as part of your action. So, we do have the recommended action before you tonight, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this project.
Thank you, David. Do the commissioners have any questions for David at this time? I'll start down at my left. Commissioner Galvin?
I'll wait.
Okay. So, now can we hear the report on item number six?
Yes. This particular is an application similarly filed for a wireless telecommunications facility. This would be a property located at 3199 South River Road, which is south of Linden Road, also along the, where the current levy is. This is a project that is since been, was received in March shortly after we received the Crown Castle application, and at this point, it stands as a 105-foot-tall, also monopine, be located on a eight-tenths-of-an-acre portion of a much larger property that, you know, exists in its present condition. Access to the site under current conditions would be from South River Road. There's an existing barn on the property that would be relocated to house the equipment cabinets that any carriers would have. Staff is not recommending approval of this project to your commission tonight, is that we believe that the required findings cannot be made. At this time, this applicant has not provided any evidence to staff that shows that there would be a coverage gap in this area, and to our knowledge, does not have any carriers that are signed up to go on this particular facility, which has been the commission's past practice. This facility here is, it is proposed, although it is a similar, similar application, but somewhat in name only. There is, at this time, we have not received the information that's required in our wireless policy regarding, regarding coverage and evidence of carriers that would be provided, as we do not know if there are any other carriers that are available out there at this present time. So, although we do believe that, you know, as evidenced in staff report, that some of these agreed findings remain, not all of them can be made for this application. So, with that, we are recommending that you not approve this particular conditional use permit application based on the lack of ability to make all the required findings. So, with that, I'll close our presentation on this item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on this one or the prior item.
So, this one also has access from public streets, correct?
Under present conditions, there is an access point from South River Road.
And does this one also have access to utilities?
The site is powered currently.
Do any of the other commissioners have questions for staff before I open the public So, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I will ask the applicant for item number five. So, even though we're hearing these at the same time, we're going to keep comments and questions separate. Okay?
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name's Tim Page with Crown Castle. I'm thinking I have to run through this fairly quickly, so I'll try to do that. I also want to get my colleague up at when I've concluded my presentation. Again, I want to thank David Tilly and Kathy Allen. They've been absolutely wonderful to work through, work with for this whole project. So, we're here tonight to discuss conditional use permit 14-02, which has been recommended for approval by planning staff. Before we do, I'd like to touch on some outstanding issues that may be pertinent to this presentation. So, we, we continue to hear concerns raised by adjacent property owners about a conflict of interest, specifically concern about the potential for a conflict of interest or preference going to the city employee by virtue of his title. That's a quote from the letter. It's in the last page of your staff report. The same letter was also included in the April 3rd workshop hearing materials, and the same concern was raised in the March 27th letter from, for the attorney for Mr. Hart. We fully acknowledge that the subject property is owned by an employee of the city of West Sacramento. We also note that Mr. Hart is a former chairman of the planning commission for the city of West Sacramento. Any concerns made about the potential conflict can certainly be made about both parties. But we only have letters citing a conflict of interest on the Crown project. There is no conflict. This is a pretty simple, straightforward application for a cell tower. We continue to resent and reject any and all accusations over any perceived conflict of interest between the Crown project and the city of West Sacramento. The most recent site plan shows the, the location of the existing domestic water, as well as the septic tank. We understand that's still an outstanding issue. We only received tonight comments from Yolo County Environmental Health. If you look through the staff report, you'll see that the well and the septic tank are over 200 feet away from the proposed project. Crown fully agrees with the conditions placed on the project by Yolo County Environmental Health. Owner must do a full site evaluation with their office, and we have, we have no problem with that. So, we'd be happy to include that in the conditions of approval. The project will remove seven walnut trees that were planted on the property by the previous homeowner. Mitigation for this is noted on page eight of the environmental checklist. As these are not landmark or native oak trees, we don't see this as a significant concern for the project. One of, one of the questions floating around is why the two, why the two projects didn't combine specifically on the Hart location. And the reason why, there's a number of reasons, is the Hart project does not meet the definition of a cell tower. So, if you look at the wireless ordinance, which is included in the, in the staff report on page two, it says, "A wireless telecommunications facility is a facility that transmits or receives electromagnetic signals for the purpose of transmitting digital voice or data communication." There's no antennas on that tower, so therefore, it doesn't meet the definition of a cell tower. So, what you have is you have a steel monopine structure with no antennas and cannot transmit There are no coverage maps because there's no gap in coverage, because there was never any coverage to begin with, because the tower did not exist, whereas our tower does exist. There's no recorded parcel to date. What we have is a site plan with a proposed parcel, and that parcel is going to be defined by the execution of the final maps being prepared for the West Sacramento Flood Control Agency. There's no corners, and it won't be defined until that levy work is done or those maps are approved. There's no property dedication, road abandonment, or parcel map, and all of that is solely dependent on the maps being prepared for the Flood Control Agency. There's no access to the site. The site plan shows access. The access has to be granted from an easement from the Flood Control Agency, and that doesn't So, moving on towards the staff report, we meet the six findings that the commission has to decide on. That's outlined fairly significantly on the very beginning of the staff report. I don't think I need to go through that. We agree with the findings as noted in the staff report. We've reviewed and accept all the conditions of approval for the project and make the final points on the Crown project. The tower is being taken as a result of involving the city of West Sacramento and the West Sacramento Flood Control Agency. We've acted in a judicious manner to accommodate the request to move the tower. This parcel is the only one in discussion that's not affected by the yet-to-be-determined West Sacramento Flood Control Agency acquisition and changes affected by the proposed construction This, the property that we're on, it has a fixed boundary and it is a recorded parcel. It already has access. The property to the south and to the west to be subdivided, but they aren't subdivided. They have an approved tentative map, but there's no recorded map for any of that property. There's no access to, to place a site on the property to the south and the west because it's not created yet. The eastern boundary of the tentative map is also affected by the ultimate right-of-way yet to be determined by the prepared maps for the Flood Control Agency. So, in summary, we agree with staff's recommendations for approval for the project. We respectfully request an approval or denial of our project, and at this time, I'd like to have my colleague come up and speak very briefly to the commission.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Joe Parker. I'm outside counsel for Crown Castle. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Just briefly, the last time that I spoke before the commission was with respect to your review and change of your policy with respect to wireless and citing of wireless communication facilities. We're back here this evening because admittedly, not only the Crown project, but Mr. Hart's project, neither of those projects comply with the city's ordinance with respect to the setback requirement. The commission has revised its policy to reflect that if a party can make the requisite showing under the federal standards, in this case, showing that a substantial gap in coverage exists that needs to be addressed, that the commission has the authority to approve the application. I don't think there's any question, at least I don't believe there's any question, that there, that showing has been made by Crown Castle and, and the inability of that showing to be made by the competing project. It goes without saying that we are relocating existing current customers who are providing critical coverage to the area. We need to find a home for them. We are completely willing to address and comply with the staff's recommendations with respect to screening of the facility. That consists of a state-of-the-art stealth monopine landscape screening that is intended to not only screen the equipment cabinets, but also the lower portion of the monopole, and also meet compliance with the decibel requirements for the equipment that will be operating at that site. So, with respect to that, I believe Crown Castle has fully met the requirements of federal law, and we ask that you approve the application in light of that submission. I'd also like to address the alternative site analysis. I've been before you twice now, and following the early hearing in May, I asked my client to reach out to Mr. Hart, as well as inquired of the Van Bierens, to reach out to Mr. Hart, as well as inquired of the Van Buren's, who are on the other side of the proposed location, to determine what their interest level was in securing a leasehold interest at those locations. By way of history, I think it's important for you to know that Crown Castle first reached out to Mr. Hart when it learned of the need for relocation. We also spoke to Mr. Sneed at the same time, and Crown Castle, in its judgment, business judgment, made a determination that the Sneed property was the best-suited property for the proposed enforced relocation that we're dealing with. That took into consideration the land development issues that have been addressed by my colleague, but more importantly, securing a leasehold interest on commercially reasonable terms. So with that in mind, we proceeded with Mr. Sneed's property as the applicant for chosen location in this application. By the same token, I also wanted to take a second stab at that, and so Crown Castle did reach out to Mr. Hart again after that early hearing in May. Those negotiations were abruptly terminated by Mr. Hart. He did come back and express interest at a later time. There were negotiations that commenced, and my client again took a pass because it did not feel, for many reasons, but including commercially reasonable reasons, that the terms could not be reached in a manner that would satisfy our business interests. The same is also true with the Van Buren's. There was some initial discussion about it, but we were told that they were not interested in pursuing further discussions until this hearing was concluded. I bring that to your attention because each of the parties on either side of the Sneed property are raising aesthetic issues, and we're really talking about the proximity of this tower to the property lines. And I remain troubled by that because each of these parties are really seeking a business interest here. They would like to be the landlord in this situation. My client has the unenviable task of finding a location that works for them. We've selected the Sneed property because it meets all the criteria, not required by you, but by our own business interests. So I'm troubled when parties come forward and, in the public submissions, complain about aesthetics when they are the same parties that want to cite a tower on their property. So I think it's important that we focus on the issues at hand, and that is that my client is required to relocate this facility, that we have undertaken substantial effort and expense to find a home for this facility. We've been entirely cooperative with this commission in terms of meeting your aesthetic requirements and also meeting your code, and also assisting you in addressing the problems before the legislative ordinance, I'm sorry, before your public policy change was made with respect to the wireless telecommunications policy itself. So with respect to that, I think that before you today, the only project that is on all fours is the Crown Castle project before you. And in our business, particularly when we're faced with this extensive and expensive relocation like this, we have no choice but to adhere to the obligations of our customer and to provide seamless and continuous coverage. And when you propose a relocation of this type, you necessarily have to go to a facility or location that has predictable and commercially feasible outcomes, and that is why the Sneed property has been chosen. It meets all of those criterias, including the aesthetic issues that are raised by your code. So I would just ask you to consider that in reviewing this application this evening, and I'll be happy to address any questions that you may have. Last issue is one of a legal issue, and that is, I also believe that this facility is probably subject to federal legislation known as Section 6409. This was legislation passed by Congress in 2012. It relates to the limited authority of local jurisdictions to deny certain applications where it is an eligible facility. And while 6409 does not necessarily be applied, has not been necessarily applied in a relocation to my knowledge of this type, I believe that it meets the requirements of the code. So in addition to us meeting the federal standard, I do believe that there's a mandatory obligation for this commission to consider its obligations to comply with federal law under Section 6409, and you may want to hear more from your city council about that. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Before we go on, I'd like to read into the record, due to an unforeseen emergency, Commissioner Galvin was required to leave tonight's meeting. However, with five commissioners, we still have, still here tonight, we do have corpsmen will continue the meeting. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant before I go on to the rest of the public comment?
I do have a question then.
We have a question for the applicant.
I was out there because I wanted to see what the trees were like, and I noticed that all the, and I'm not the only one, others of us have seen the same thing, so, but we have a question because you changed the location of where you want the site, and by your map, you moved it down to 1305 Linden Road, which is Deacon Kimrose's property, a lady I happen to know, and I asked if she'd been in contact with you. Is there a reason your architect drew everything for Linden Road?
I'm very confused because ours is-
Sir, this is your map, and over here it says 1305 Linden Road.
That's incorrect. That's a mistake. It's 1265 Linden Road.
1245.
You know, and we've all talked a little bit about this, but I mean, are we sure the architect didn't draw this property for the other property?
We just had these drawings revised to provide some additional elevations for you, including the water tank and-
Well, it's just a question. I mean, they're written for the wrong property. She's very excited that you want to pay her. How did my name get on here?
I agree with you that that is an error. That address is incorrect, but the rest of the plans are correct.
So we have to do something about this, I would assume, at some point in time.
Yes, sir, we do.
And, you know, not to take this thing too far afield, but there's a thing in here that says, "We're not allowed to correct anything by state law," according to his document here. Does that mean that-
I think that's standard verbiage, but-
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
But if you'll notice, those plans aren't-
That's why we have an attorney. She'll be happy to tell us. But I, I mean, I guess my question is, are we sure that the gentleman drew Mr. Sneed's property and didn't, in fact, I guess they're all the same out there, and didn't-
I've been intimately involved in the construction documents, and I can assure you that they are correct, but that address is incorrect.
That will be a question, so you guys might want to talk while you're out there for a minute.
When you look at the plan, right, when you look at the plans, just the site address is wrong, all the maps point to 1245, but we just wanted to bring to attention that.
The other thing that we didn't bring up in the interest of time, and forgive me if I'm bringing it up now, we only received the memorandum with a number of comments, and you know, if you'd like some additional information about these, we can comment on that as well, so.
We just got ours, too. No, I'm still concerned, though, that what our legal obligation is, so you guys really should talk with our-
I appreciate you picking that up.
We have another question.
While you're up here, and I was going to wait, but since you're up here and the public hearing is open, did I hear you correctly? You are in fact looking for an up or down vote tonight.
That is correct. We would like a yea or nay this evening.
So you will not entertain a continuance?
We will not entertain a continuance.
So along Charlie's point out of the maps, there seems to be an error on one of your maps, and I would therefore find it incomplete. You've added a carrier, AT&amp;T, to one of your towers. You've raised the tower to 125. There's no equipment box for it, and I'm not sure where it's going to go, and I question the trees.
It is shown as proposed.
It is shown, AT&amp;T isn't on here as proposed, at least not. I don't want to open up the big map. I'm looking at the little map.
You have to look at the elevations on the larger drawings to be able to see it.
I need to pause the big map. My apologies, I did-
Mr. Page, I believe Mr. LeBig is referring to the ground equipment.
What happened when we looked at it?
I'm sorry, say again?
I believe he's referring to the ground equipment.
Well, I'm talking specifically about the elevations. That's where you'll find that AT&amp;T's proposed antennas.
Not the antennas. I'm looking for the equipment box on the ground.
The equipment can be shared in one of the ones that's already being shown.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be any additional equipment shelter on the property. It would remain as four.
So it would only be four, and you would not be adding a fifth?
Would not be adding one.
Okay. The other question I had specifically for you, the elevations of the antennas. Previous applications we've seen, we hear there's a bit of a range of what the minimum height for an array can be, and both proposals this evening, I know we're just addressing yours, but both appear to be higher than that by about 25, 20, 25 feet. Can you share with us why the height of the lowest array was set where it is?
The height of the array are set by the RF engineers per carrier, and as a general rule of thumb, the higher the antennas, the greater the coverage. You can tell from the terrain and the trees out there that they want to be as high as they can to maximize their coverage.
Okay. What would be the minimum height for an array?
Well, the existing pole is 108 feet. That's what that one was approved at. So we've elevated this to add another carrier. So had we not added that carrier, we could reduce the heights of the tower itself.
I guess actually my question is more of the lowest array.
I can address that for you. It's a function of maintaining the coverage objective, and where you can see that is on the coverage maps. So in other words, when you see a gap in coverage, the placement of those antennas necessarily can fill in all of the coverage, too much of the area overlap, or not enough. And so height is dictated as to how you fill in that gap of coverage. So in this situation, there is a gap of coverage that would exist as a result of removal of our current facility, and these antennas have to be hung at those specific heights in order to fill in those coverages as shown on most maps. If you go lower, you're not filling in the gap in coverage, you're leaving holes, and that's what dictates tower height, among other issues like ordinances.
Okay, so specifically, if you were to lower it to, say, 55 feet, you would increase the gap.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But wouldn't that be the fact that if you keep this current number of carriers you have, you wouldn't need to increase the size of the-
Well, I think it depends somewhat on elevation, and the change in location. Certainly, the increase in height is intended to, but frankly, we prefer to operate at lower heights than higher heights because of issues from neighbors and other reasons associated with the cost of the larger facility. So whenever possible, we're trying to operate at the lowest level, but it's a function of meeting those coverage objectives. Fortunately, if you're operating at 30 feet, you're going to have losing coverage.
And the other aspect that goes into this is we're moving further west from Highway 5, which is-
Please speak into the microphone. We're recording, so please speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. We're moving away from our current coverage objective. We're moving west from the original coverage objective of covering I-5, so the additional height would help increase that coverage.
Commissioner Austin, do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you. I'll go on to a request to speak. John Sneed.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and then I represent my wife and I at 1245 Linden Road, and we've been working with Crown Castle for some time on the project. And I would just like to reiterate a few things, and that is, we believe the Crown Castle project meets all the conditions set aside by the city staff, and also, we'd like to point out the fact that the city, from my understanding, is moving ahead with lots of projects, some of them being advancing the Levy project and Village Parkway, and Crown has been asked to have all the utilities off of the Levy by a certain time, and certainly our project is, has all of the boundary maps and everything, like Joe had mentioned, and everything is set for our project to move forward, so I'd like to ask that you consider that, and we look forward to a affirmative vote tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim Page? Rory Hodgson?
Good evening. My name's Rory Hodgson. I represent the owner of 1265 Linden Road, which is adjacent to the properties in both proposals. I'm here to talk about number five. You know, obviously, I can't, this tower has to go somewhere, and it sounds like it's Crown Castle saying it's got to go on Sneed's property, and I just hope that the alternative site plan is not a, the only reason is a commercial interest, because there are aesthetics going into this that affects my client's property. The main difference is this one is just right on the, right on the property lines, and the way the property is situated, it's going to affect two lots. So, you know, there is an aesthetic piece to it, and I just don't, I don't want the West Sacramento wireless policies basically saying the least intrusive site possible, and Crown has made that pitch tonight, but I just want to make sure that that is actually the least intrusive site, not based on money, but based on the engineering and the physical location of the gaps in coverage. The other issue was, if it is going to be approved, the conditions on number two, I request trees to be planted, I think they just say on the west side. I would like trees to be planted on the south side as well, because that's part of our property, making an L shape to the west and to the south of our property. And I request that a CMU wall with a textured finish be placed around the boxes. I'm not sure what was on there. I tried to look through and couldn't find out, but if it is going to be approved, I really, my client doesn't want chain link fence with barbed wire and light pollution spilling over, so some sort of CMU wall would be appropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you like to clarify what a CMU wall is?
A CMU wall is a concrete mason wall with probably a textured finish or some sort of rock wall. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rick Hart?
I'm Rick Hart. We're staying on the Crown. Couple things. I might be able to clear up one thing about the towers that Mr. LeBig talked about. There's an email right here I have to Kathy Allen saying, from Mr. Page, saying that he only has three carriers, that the next L is not going to go on the tower. So really, they only need four. That's why they only have four boxes down below, that they're not going to be relocated, that they joined with Sprint, and it says so right here in this email. Another thing is, is that, as far as I know, we don't have a gap in coverage, so I don't know why everybody's freaked out. We are potentially going to have a gap in coverage, but do we have a gap in coverage right now? Is there a gap? I didn't see that in their map. I see a potential gap when this thing is down, when they come down, there's going to be a gap, and at that point, this will be fixed. But right now, there's not a gap in coverage. So when you look at, you look at Crown's so-called finished product, okay, 125 feet, which they don't need, they need maybe 100, okay, for four carriers. AT&amp;T isn't guaranteed, okay? You know how I know? Because they text me this morning, they still don't have the RF readings. They're looking at both of our towers, okay? Another reason, I talked to Crown this morning, okay? They're still talking to me. Maybe not to these guys, but they still talk to me, okay? So it's not out, okay? And everything he said about me is bull, okay? You want to look at the, it's in there, my email to them is in there, okay? They weren't just buying one tower for me, they were buying two towers. They're buying the tower on Triangle, and they wanted to buy this one over here. They set the price. I'm fine. I'm fine with their price. They set it. I didn't argue with them. They just, these guys here in California just shut the guys in Florida down. Shut them down, period, end of story. They're going to get their way, they're going to shove it down your throat and mine. That's what they're here to do, period. And I'm hoping to God you don't let them do it, because that's the only thing. There is no God reason that you would put that thing on that parcel when you've got the project that I'm laying out right here, okay? They are, if you go on the quality score that we were supposed to go- They are, if you go on the, on the quality score that we were supposed to go on, you got, who's closer to the policy? We are, okay? We don't need any additional roads. They do. They're worried about the flood control agency bringing in a road? Well, the flood control agency is the one moving you. You don't think you can get a little cooperation on their road? They've already said twice in this meeting that they're going to provide access. How much do they need? Do they need it in blood? Okay? All equipment on ours will be completely enclosed. And not only will it be enclosed, but there's four inches of insulation inside that building, okay? It's a very solid building, okay? It's going to be quiet, it's going to be nice, and it's also going to look... Am I out already? Damn. Anyway, there's no issues with oak trees on our property. There's no precedence of putting things in people's backyard. We have support from local nonprofits on our site that want to use our site, that want to use the balance of our site. So what are they bringing to this town? And anybody that wants to read the emails, right there.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
I'll be back for mine, too.
I have no other request to speak for item number five. So we'll go on to item number six. And I'll ask the applicant for item number six to come up. Mr. Hart, you can come back up. So now we're moving on to just your item number.
Did we hear this? I'm sorry, did we hear the staff presentation first? Have we heard the staff presentation?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I've, I've heard this a few times, so I just got a little confused.
I'm going to take it, you guys have a letter from us, okay? And in it, we addressed some of the issues. So significant gap in coverage. They're saying I didn't show the gap in coverage, okay? The question is, is there going to be a gap in coverage? And can my property handle it? That is the question needs to be asked. It's not whether we show it or who shows it, or it's, is it there or is it not there? And is it, if it's there, can we cover it, okay? The answer is yes, obviously. We're right next door. If they can cover it, we can. Public necessity. For some reason, the staff left that out of ours. Application altogether. Don't know why. You, I have no idea. The finding can be found for ours, just like it could be for Crown's. Carrier commitments. So apparently to staff, I'm going to build this thing. I'm going to spend half a million dollars and just let it grow weeds. Like, I'm going to build it if I don't have a carrier. Does that sound realistic to anybody up here? Okay? All right? I'm dealing with AT&amp;T. I'll deal with Crown. I don't care, okay? I'm trying to make, make this thing work for everybody. Crown's has a problem. I don't know what it is. They need to get over it, okay? The, let's go down, necessary approvals. In your packet that I sent you, you see the Yolo County Environmental. Did you read that? Their conditions, right? So they're going to do a full inspection of their well. They're septic, okay? Part of it is because the way they drew it, and I don't know whether it is there or not, but they drew their septic line fifteen feet from their well. I mean, in some places, that can get your house condemned, okay? So they need to come out and reevaluate that entire site and bring that whole thing up to code. Now you start putting 4,000 square foot septic systems on that lot and see how everything fits. I've said that from the beginning, and nobody seems to want to pay attention to it. We have all the permits. We have approval from Yolo County. We're the ones that have everything done. We don't have to have a carrier to get a conditional use permit. It's not part of the policy. It was never brought up. When I was told, this was a beauty contest. This was going to be based off what's best for the city, you know? What's best for the community? What's, you know, what, who is the closest to the policy? Who fits closest to the policy? Who's the furthest away? They're fifty feet, we're a hundred feet, okay? There's a big difference. You know, I'm offering two different scenarios. They say, oh, I didn't put carriers in the boxes. There's carriers in here, okay? Problem is, is if you start putting too many carriers and it starts to look like the one they have is like a spaceship. So you have to be careful. See, these drawings that I gave you are to scale, okay? They're absolutely to scale. I was really careful when we did this, so you could really see what a tree's going to look like, how the barn's going to work out, how the landscaping's going to work out. And I did it to scale, so you could get a real good idea on what it's going to look like, so you could help make a decision on which do you think is better. I don't care. It's up to you. I have full drawings for both in there. I guess I'm done.
I don't think the time clock... No, the time clock doesn't apply to, I'm sorry.
Right.
Oh.
Because you're the applicant, the time clock doesn't...
Oh, okay. I just heard the beep.
Right.
I already talked about it. I mean, AT&amp;T texted me this morning, they still don't have good RF readings on the site, so they don't know if they're going to be there. So when I did this, I didn't feel any, any, I didn't have a firm commitment. So I know the three carriers are throwing, showing a gap in coverage. So those three carriers need to be relocated. When you look at the tower, it's a three-carrier tower inside there, okay? To go, to put another one on, we'd have to go on the legs, but it would still be higher than the current lowest carrier that's on there now, on the current site. So we could still, still manage it if, if we needed a fourth carrier. We could still get it on, onto the legs. Not the most attractive, but it was a better look than putting another one inside that thing, because it really started to look bad. You know, we did try to stretch it out. Three's, three's the most we could get and still make it look natural. I went with the old wood color. I tried to tie everything in, so that everything kind of fit the community. I wanted this to be something that people would use. And I went around to the town and asked them if they would use it. And I got a big, more sounding yes. So I'm trying to offer something for the community, as well as everything else.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to add before I...
Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Mr. Hart, from the commissioners? Commissioner LeBig?
I'm sure I do. I'm just not there yet.
Commissioner Moore?
Well, when you read over the county report, make sure you note that they do put in there that they're not even sure that that property can be approved. So if it was approved and the county killed it, what happens then? This is something that should have been done months ago, okay? This, the first thing I did when I, when I built my pool, I had to supply to the county where my well was, where my septic was, where my neighbors... That's normal. I don't know why this wasn't done. This is something that should have been done months ago, both projects, straight out the door, and we would have these answers, okay? But you don't have them now, because they just did it. And now it comes back like this. And in there, it specifically states, and he knows, it is too tight. It's one acre. That's why he put that little caveat in the bottom of his memo. It may not be able to be approved.
Okay, just a second. We have, Commissioner LeBig has a question?
Yes, did Mr. Moore want to go first?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. So we've received a lot of information, and some of it is tonight. So we're still, we're still getting through it. I had a question regarding the electrical. Does, will the property have electrical during construction of the levee?
Yes.
It will?
Yes, it has, it has it now. And there's a site in there, and you see in the drawings, a temporary power being brought in.
Okay, and is that documented somewhere? Is that part of the Safka project? I'm sorry, West Safka project?
Yeah, that would be part of the West Safka project.
Okay, and is that documented somewhere in their...
It's on my plans. I don't know if, I'm sure they would have brought it up, but they would have had a problem with it.
Okay. Also, the other applicant has requested an up or down tonight. Are you making the same request, or...
I'm not making an ultimatum. I feel I have the best project. I feel that's what it should be ruled on. And let the chips fall where they may at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Okay, request to speak. Jeff Avila?
Hello. My name is Jeff Avila. I live at 1205 Linden Road. I'm concerned about these cell phone towers being built in very close proximity to my property, especially the one at 311, or 3199 South River Road. There's a barn where the proposed tower would be built, right behind my fence. It's about eight feet from my property line. And I'm very concerned about, about the health risks, the microwave, microwave radiation, and about the generators kicking on and off all hours of the day and night to service these towers. We spend a lot of time outside, even in our backyard. And this, this tower's going to be a hundred and five feet tall, right behind my back fence. And I'm just very concerned about everything about it. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Avila.
Thanks. Sorry, I was nervous.
Brian Manning?
Good evening, folks. My name is Brian Manning, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Hart and South River LLC. And I just wanted to address a few things that, that were mentioned during both discussion of application, or item number five and item number six. Staff stated that the required findings can be made on number five, but they can't be made on number six. I don't think that's true. And the reason why I say that is, number one, both of them meet that finding. There's going to be a significant gap in coverage. That's undisputed. When this levee project goes through, it's going to require relocation of that tower. Relocation of that tower will mean that the reason why it has to be relocated is because there's a significant gap in coverage. It's undisputed, and it cannot be questioned. Number two, staff says that can't be met for the Hart property, but I don't understand why. They talk about the public health and safety of having to make 911 calls and the convenience of mobile. That applies equally here. I don't know why that was glossed over or said it couldn't be met for the Hart property. So we believe that can be met. Number three is, it won't impair the integrity or character of the neighborhood. We've heard from multiple folks tonight about their concerns. You have letters from the adjacent neighbor who is potentially calling in a subdivision. You heard from Mr. Avila tonight, who has concerns with both of the towers. So if anything, it's equally applicable, maybe weighing a little bit more in favor of the Hart property. Number four, this is, both of them meet that obligation. Number five, this is, I think, where the heart of the matter is. Crown has said they are putting an ultimatum on this commission. Yes or no? But they haven't met the obligation of number five. Yolo County has not signed off on this project. They failed to include Yolo County in this discussion regarding a full site evaluation. The proper procedure is not to have it as part of your conditions of approval. The proper procedure is to get it done before you stand up here. So they do not meet the requirements of having a completed application. Therefore, based on their request, you have to deny it. Number six is sequo. I would just say that while nobody wants to get into a sequel fight, they've, staff has stated that there is not a significant difference between a hundred and five foot versus a hundred and twenty-five feet. But I would say that if I was out there, I would disagree, because it's a two-story building you're adding on to that. So with that, I guess my time's over.
Thank you. Tim Page? Okay. Mr. Parker, you're next.
Thank you. Just very briefly, I recognize that there is a fair amount of emotion charged with these competing projects. The issue I'm having is that we're required to meet your requirements to make application to you and seek approval. So when we talk about the technical requirements, and the question is, who has met those requirements? Crown has, at every juncture, made effort to meet the commission's requirements not only of your code, but also of your policy, and to address staff's concerns along the way. With respect to the contentious nature of the relationship between Mr. Hart and Crown, or how he characterizes it, I think it speaks for itself as to the status of negotiations where we are. But again, I just want to remind the commission that because we are in this position, and frankly, we don't want to be here, this is, this was something that we did not come in voluntarily to address. But when faced with this situation, we have to go with factors that have some consistency and predictability. And you've heard from my colleague about the problems with the land development issues that he's addressed. You've heard about the fact that we have no secured leasehold interest with Mr. Hart. You've heard that we have a secured leasehold interest. We have customers that are committed to go on our site. And frankly, the lack of a, I think there was a comment about something about a firm commitment or the extent of it. Carriers don't go on the sites unless there's zoning approval. So if the commission is concerned about the commitment of Crown's customers, you can make that a condition of the CUP. Lastly, just with respect to the continuance issue, if, if the commission has an issue that they want to address with us about a continuance, I'd like to hear about it. We're asking for a decision, because we feel that our application is in order, and we've asked, we've done what you've asked us to do. So if there is something that you feel that is, needs to be dealt with, I'm all ears about it. But the reason why we're asking you for a decision is because we have to stay ahead of your other project. And that is a project that takes away our current site. So we've worked very hard, since we filed this application in February, to try to do the right thing here. We've, you've got the material in front of you. To the extent that there is something else that you need from us, I'd like to hear about it before we tell you that we want a decision tonight. But it's really just an effort to move the project along and come out of here with an approval or a denial. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I have a question for Rory Hodgson. Did you speak, did you get a chance to speak on both items? Just, just six, just five, okay?
I just wanted to address what counsel for Crown said on the aesthetics of the property on, on, on both. And I know that the 1205 property also has problems with both, and the tower has to go somewhere. But if carriers don't, you know, commit and, commit until the zoning or until the conditions are approved, why not pick the best one, the least intrusive? And that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before I close the public hearing, I want to ask the commissioners if they have any questions for Mr. Hart, before we go on? No? Okay. So we've heard from both. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to my commissioners. Do we have questions for, questions or comments for staff? I'll start on my left. Commissioner Allison?
Yeah, this is, I appreciate all the comments, not, not just the comments, but the folks who've, who've come out, residents, neighbors. It's, I appreciate, you know, the time that you've taken and the interest that you've taken in this particular issue. So in my mind, we're looking at balancing a couple of things. One is residents, property owners in the area. But I also need, which I really respect, but I also want to make sure that we're balancing that with some of the issues of, I guess I'll call it, public good. I do believe that we are undeniably going to be having a lapse in coverage. And that's due to activities not related, actually, to the city of West Sacramento. That's due to some, some outside forces and some other areas that we don't really have control over. So keeping that in mind, I, I am inclined to, to consider staff approval. And I'll just leave that at that and allow some of the other commissioners... I'm inclined to support staff recommendations for both five and six, but I do want to have some of the commissioners weigh in, because I know that there's a lot of things that we need to cover.
Thank you. Commissioner LeBig?
Sorry about that. My preference would be that we would typically hear these over more than one meeting. And in this case, it is coming out as at one, one meeting. I mostly have some comments. I mostly have some comments as I've already worked with staff as much as I possibly could this week. I, I struggle with number five's findings. To that matter, I actually struggle with number, number six's findings as well. I actually don't believe that any project right now, or either project, can meet the findings, all of them. And so I'll hit them now, which is why I would recommend continuance or denial. So for project number five, this is Linden Road. I, I find it very difficult that we can make finding number three, placing 125-foot cellphone tower 50 feet from a residential lot that is intended on being subdivided. That's, that's something that the policy, when drafted, specifically targeted as protecting. And in this case, my, my question would immediately pop up if there was only one project in front of us. Is there a better location that this could, that they could have looked at? And did they, did they look at it? It's a due diligence question and I do realize that, you know, we, we only look at the application as it's presented to us. But I would ask myself that question, is there a better location? Because as of right now, neither project complies with the setback standards in our policy. So did, did both projects show due diligence in finding the appropriate location or the best location for the tower? And certainly, coverage, data, coverage gaps, that is very, very important. So we are limited at looking in a very small location. I, I do find that 50 feet away, 125-foot cellphone tower, monopine, could impair the character of the neighborhood. I do question the application and whether or not it is in fact complete. And if it isn't complete, this is a question for David Tilly. Do they have a chance to fix it if it goes into appeal, for example? And this is totally speculation. If it's denied and appealed, can the, can the application be corrected prior to hearing an appeal?
Yeah, there could be non-substantive changes.
Okay. Thank you. David, can you also, I know this is a, this is following a comment on the application for number five, which is the Linden Road application. Finding number five, the sewer line and the Yolo County statement, I missed it, I'm sorry. Can you, can you please?
Yes. This issue has been brought to our attention by numerous parties regarding the existing septic system on the Sneed property, item number five. Our staff did go and meet with Yolo County Environmental Health at their offices previously. And then we also had a discussion with them about it this morning and also even this afternoon when they were down to our offices on another matter. They had provided their recommendations to us. The further stuff that we came today can be, you know, would be handled at the building permit phase when you have much more detailed construction drawings. At this time, that full evaluation may not even be possible given, you know, the level of detail we typically would have at this particular, you know, juncture. So that, that issue to us has been resolved with health as early as this morning. They would, this, they will have to look at this more closely when the building permit phase, you know, were to roll around. But that matter, in our estimation, has been, you know, addressed sufficiently at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. Not yet, I'm stuck with, that was just one. Regarding application number six, which is the South River Road application. In this case, environmental find, I'm sorry, the findings, I have one, two, and three. And I think it was two, three, and four? Too many pieces of paper open at the same time.
So.
Both of them at the same time? Or are we talking about one at a time?
Both of them at the same time.
Two and three cannot be met, four can be met, five can be, so it's just two and three. Sorry about that. Oh, one, it is one, two, and three. Sorry. I believe one can be, can be met. My focus at this point, again, I didn't expect this to be, be put into one meeting. My, my focus would be selecting the best location, knowing that there will be a coverage gap. It would still be under Mr. Hart's burden of proof to show coverage gap. And how they, how that gap would be eliminated by a tower. And number three, the spec tower. I think we, all, okay. Okay. Number, number six, the South River Road was, is currently deniable on three findings. It's one, two, and three. It is, number one is just that it's listed as a conditional use in the zone regulations or elsewhere in this chapter. It's, it's, I know we have to take these, one project at a time. It is difficult to do, to do that, but I do believe that number one can be proved. Number two, essential and desirable to the public comfort and convenience. Mr. Hart's application did not include coverage gap maps. That's what it's coming down to. We know they're available or could be made available. The application didn't include them. So, and as of currently, number two is deniable. Number three, impair the integrity or character of the neighborhood. I actually believe the South River Road property is the better alternative as a location, from a location standpoint. And from the design, I actually appreciated the barn, the equipment being housed in a barn with the shorter tree. However, it was a spec tower and the, the monopine didn't include antennae. There will obviously need to be antennas. So to be approvable, it appears that it would need antenna. So one, two, and three, oh, given that Mr. Hart could actually and did provide so many renditions for possible towers, I believe it's possible for him to come up with one with antenna on it. So even though one, two, and three cannot be met at this time, I do believe it's possible for them to be met. Whereas the Linden Road property, I still have a hard time finding it to be possible that finding number three can be met because of the distance to residential and a future subdivision and impairing the integrity of that lot in particular. I could go on, but those are, those are my summaries of findings, so I will stop for at least a while. Thank you.
Question more?
Okay. Let me have a little drink of water and I'll go down a couple of mine. And I guess, David, this is, I'd, I'd like to kind of start with the map issue that we have here.
The incorrect address?
The incorrect address with the, with the thing that the architect wrote on the bottom or stamped on the bottom says it is a violation of the law for any person unless they are acting under the direction of a licensed professional engineer to alter this document. Do we have the right to change the address on this document?
The, the address map is a, you know, it's essentially a typo. What we, what, I know, I recognize that copyright information is on there.
It's not copyright information, it's something else, isn't it?
Well, most, most plans that are stamped by a licensed professional are copyrighted.
Well, I mean, I read his, even his directions of getting there and that could very well be a map of 1305 rather than 1245. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, 1245 is the project, you know.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, this could be a map of either one, couldn't it? Or do we know specifically it's not?
No, it represents the rectangular one-acre lot that's at 1245 Linden.
Okay. I, you know, it's kind of like Russ was talking about. I'd feel a little more comfortable sometimes if we had all our i's dotted and our t's crossed. I mean, just because I'd like to make sure that it's in fact Mr. Sneed's property, not Mrs. Kim, Kimbrough's property. There's no reason for me to go through all the findings because I think Russ did a fine job on talking about all the findings. And I happen to agree with him completely that it's hard to understand how we can make some of the findings for one and not for both because logic tells me that even though we didn't have a map in there, we know we're gonna have a lack of coverage if in fact the cell tower comes down. The good news is, we haven't got the cell tower down today, so we have no lack of coverage today and we have time to make sure that we've addressed all these issues. The, the well and septic issue was something I brought up months ago, it seems like, when we got dealing with this to begin with, that I felt that we needed to go to both properties and talk about well and septic because there's an issue on how you build a septic tank. And I know nothing about this because I live in the city, so I don't, I don't know. But you build a septic tank and then it's got to be so far away from the well and it's probably fine how it's built today. But then, there's also got to be a place for a backup system should the one septic system fail, is what I was told one time. And I have no idea if it's true or not, but that's what I was told by somebody from the county that was here years ago, that that was one of the things they did. All I was asking when we talked about this is, if we have a septic and if we have a well, that's fine. And this goes for both projects, not just one. Because Mr. Hart, I think, is going to remove his septic, but still have a well. But I mean, are they okay? Are they in compliance with what we should do? And since we don't have something that needs to be done tonight, except, you know, for the occasion that we've been asked to try to make a decision tonight, and I understand why, this seems like it's been going on for about two years now. But we need to make sure that we can do it. We need to make sure that we can put a septic in there, we can have a well in there, and we can build these roads that we're gonna have to build and it's still okay. And then I was reading the thing about the trees and how big the trees are. And while I appreciate the comment from, you know, Mr. Page, I think he said something about, well, they're not heritage oak trees, and I totally agree. But I had a friend that had a tree in her front yard that was bringing up the sidewalk, but because it was big, Deena considered that to be a heritage tree and she would not let her take it down. Now whether or not that applies to these oak or these walnut trees, I don't know. But could it? It certainly could because if Deena thinks that those other trees that are taken out of sidewalk are good and have to stay, maybe she'd make these stay. I don't know that answer. But it's something that wouldn't take a whole lot of effort to find out as we deal with this process, whether we should get the map corrected, whether we should have Deena go out and look at these trees and see what she really thinks she's gonna do. And then we can talk to the county and have them go through their process with the well and the septic on both projects. And if we have two viable projects at the end of all that, then I think we should be moving forward. I think that the proper thing for us to do at this time is to take a deep breath because we need to make sure we can put it on both processes, on both parcels. And if we're asking for a comment on Mr. Sneed's project, while I have, you know, the same comments about how close we're gonna be to people, if we had a choice, and I don't know, and it'd be something that we would talk about, I would have talked about anyway. I kind of like the idea of the barn concept. And then you put all the carriers inside and try to take care of the noise for the neighbor. But I don't know if it would fit on his parcel or not and whether we could make that work. So while I have those kind of questions, and I still question the height of the tower and why it should be any higher than what it currently is today. Except for the fact it would be nice and we might be able to, from either side, get an extra carrier on it. And then, if we're talking about Mr. Hart's project, I'm not sure where the trail system's gonna be. Because he was talking, he's got a thing in here from the Rotary Club and from the Trail Writers Association that he'd like to make a little area that they come into. But at one point in time, I thought our trail system went up on South River Road. So if it goes on South River Road, will we really have access to that area at all?
At this point in time, it's completely unknown what level of recreational access will be afforded to us after the new levies are constructed. That's largely out of our hands. We're certainly hoping we'll get as much recreational utility, but that is yet to be determined.
But you remember what we were talking about at one point?
Well, yeah, yeah, years ago, South River Road on top of the existing levy was gonna be a trail. And Village Parkway was gonna replace it. Well, that's a little bit out the window now with our new levy, you know, needs that we have.
Yeah, and so I'm not sure if South River Road's gonna remain a road and then the trail system will be somewhere else or how it's gonna work. But I mean, those are the type of things that it would be nice to have Mr. Rusich here to say, hey, yes, we are gonna use South River Road as a trail. Or no, we're not and we're gonna make sure there's another road down there. And of course, my next question is, if South River Road becomes a trail, then how do we get to the yacht club? I don't have a yacht, but if I wanted to get there, you know, how would I get there?
South River Road as we know it today will largely disappear. That existing levy will be degraded to where it can be seasonally inundated. They are providing some short roads from Village Parkway up to essentially create a, you know, one-way loop to
Just go over the.
Connect, connect to the, to the yacht clubs.
Okay.
Over there. Because otherwise, you know, South River Road and that, that levy, as you see it, will, in many cases, will not be there anymore. They'll actually degrade it and, you know, build a whole new super levy, you know, behind it. I would like to, if you would be so kind, is to address some of the earlier questions regarding the trees and health. We have evaluated, you know, the trees. Deena has already done that. She's already calculated an estimated mitigation, you know, cost for tree removal. The final determination would be made during the building permit phase, you know, once we have those detailed plans. We've also already evaluated things with health. We've talked to them previously. We went to meet with them previously. We talked to them this morning and then we met with them this afternoon about, about these matters. And so, you know, you have an existing condition on the property that where there's a well and septic system and onsite. And then as, as customary with most projects, you know, when they're on sites that have either a well and/or septic system during the building permit phase, you know, those plans could, will be looked at at health, at, by health at that particular time when, when we send them up there. So, you know, in those particular matters, you know, we believe we have addressed sufficiently at this stage for, you know, commission consideration.
And, and in a normal circumstance, I would agree with you that that's probably true, that we would just look at it in the future. But I really think we're not taking the cell tower down tomorrow morning. It's coming down soon, but it's not coming down tomorrow. We have time to make sure projects fit on both sites. And it just concerns me that we could sit here and make a determination of either project tonight, makes no difference, and then turn around and find out that it really doesn't work? That doesn't make common sense to me when we have a little bit of time and we only have at this point three or four issues that we need to deal with. And if we do them and do them right, I think we're doing our job up here. That's why I would almost have to agree with Mr. Libic that I think I would like to see us postpone this item until these answers can be made and be made in a positive, solid manner, so we all know what we're dealing with. In case, you know, in case Mr. Rusich isn't gonna give Mr. Hart a way into his property. We need to know that. But it, he told us before he was, so I mean, that shouldn't be an issue. But we should make sure if we have these type of issues, we've dealt with every single one of them. And we come in here and then we can make a real solid decision for not only myself, but for our community. And it would make it easier for me. And my last comment was, oh, I'm glad. My last comment was, I didn't see the environmental review from the county on Mr. Hart's project other than the fact of the diesel issue. You can only have so much diesel. I thought that we should, because he's got to be taking. have so much diesel. I thought that we should, because he's gotta be taking something out of there, and make sure that we can take out, unless you're gonna lose sewer in and have a septic, I don't know how it's gonna work, but I would like to see that we have everything covered, so that we know exactly what we're dealing with. It'd make it easier to make a decision for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Guerrero?
Thank you. Um, I have also felt that both these applications are incomplete, um, and there's certainly a, um, significant amount of information that I gained tonight, um, from listening, um, from both applicants, and also those that have presented, um, correspondence that we did not have a chance to review. Um, a continuance is something that I also feel comfortable doing, um, in taking a look at both applications and reviewing it more thoroughly. Um, I haven't heard, um, whether there is a problem with the continuance, if there's something that an, an alternative is recommended, given a timeline, um, and uh, given that we have a gap in coverage, um, down the road, you know, if there's something that we need to address to move things forward, if there's approvals that we, unforeseen here in the report, that we need to take into consideration, um, so that we don't fall into the, um, you know, not addressing that gap in coverage. And, um, the other question is, um, if, uh, if there's a recommendation, um, to deny, um, the approval for both applications, could we provide a list of recommendations, um, for, uh, staff to consider as, um, the applicants come back, you know, if they decide for an appeal?
I can respond to both of those questions, um, Commissioner Guerrero. With respect to the first one and time constraints, the FCC does impose what's called a shot clock. Basically, uh, both applications were deemed complete by staff on June thirtieth of this year, and because they are proposing new cell towers, the city has one hundred and fifty days from that date to make a decision. So, those are the time parameters on which we're operating. With respect to your second question, should the commission decide to deny one or both of these, um, applications, and should an appeal be processed for either of the denials or both, um, staff could certainly include any of the planning commission's recommendation to the appeal body, which would be the city council and its staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other?
Yes, I'm, I mean, th- these are complicated. I, I actually didn't think we would get through it all in one round. Would, would you like to speak, or I could ask?
I just have one quick, I'll go ahead and make my one quick comment. Um, although I like the, uh, barn on Mr. Hart's property, um, I think it's a, it's a better, it's a visually more appealing way to hide the, um, the equipment. Um, I don't think it's fair to the property owners at twelve twenty-five and twelve oh five, um, and to say that the project location at twelve forty-five is a better location, um, because there aren't any houses yet on twelve sixty-five, I tend to, I would rather go with what is, um, better for the current, already existing, um, prop- residents, property owners. So, um, that's my only concern about, um, the location at Mr. Hart's, putting the location, the cell tower at Mr. Hart's, um, property. Um, that's all I had.
Um, David, I, I missed a question. The, uh, one of the residents, this dovetails perfectly off, off of this, uh, one of the residents brought up the, the barn, and the barn being eight feet from the property line. Um, I'm assuming, because there's a barn there already, just slightly in a different location, um, that the relocated barn is a permitted use?
Well, certainly could have a barn, um, you know, we, if it's existing presently or may or may not be conforming with respect to setbacks, um, it's not, not easy to determine right now whether or not the new location would be conforming to setbacks, 'cause we, we're only going on what are assumed to be boundaries of the property, um, based on at least what West AFCA has been, you know, planning thus far. So, that would have to be determined at a later date, is its location with respect to setbacks.
Okay. Um, and I would like clarification on that setback. Also, on the map, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the distance that I have is thirty-two feet, ten inches for, from the distance from the barn to the property line, and, uh, from that property line, it's also a hundred feet to the tower. Um, I'm not sure where the eight foot came from, unless I'm looking at the wrong map.
I'm not, I'm not certain either. Thirty-two feet would all, all but certainly be compliant with our setback requirements for the rural residential zone.
Okay, and the tower would be on the opposite side of the barn from those residences? Um, then, um, you, I think this has been stated, but, um, I forgot. Um, can the tower be constructed on the Hart property prior to the, uh, construction activities at the levy? And is that necessary?
I can address that, um, question too, Commissioner Lebig. Um, while the city is aware that staff is making certain recommendations to the West AFCA board about levy improvements, because the board has not actually acted on that decision or made any decisions on that, it would be speculative for this commission to make a decision on either tower, um, with respect to those, uh, potential levy improvements. So, my recommendation is to make your decisions without consideration of potential future levy improvements at this time.
Okay, and we would do that, I, thank you so much, by the way, that was, that's helpful. And we would do that, um, without putting in like a, a condition that?
That, that is correct, because at this point, it is speculative.
Okay, um, thank you. Those are all my comments, and, um, I'm not sure if we're gonna need to do a straw poll, (laugh) or what?
Well, I've had, um, out of the comments, uh, requests for a continuance from three of my commissioners, so I'm not exactly sure, um, what to do about that. Do I ask if there's a motion for item number five first?
Yes, the commission can entertain a motion for item number five first, and then move on to item number six. As a reminder, um, if the commission wishes to deny either or both projects in accordance with, um, the FCC, any decision by the local government to deny, request, place, construct, or modify personal wireless service facilities shall be in writing and supported by substantial evidence contained in a written record. So, again, if the commission wishes to deny one or both of these projects, I will be requesting that you articulate findings, which I will write, and which will be reflected in the record. Thank you.
Can, can we open it for discussion instead of just a movement?
Sure.
But, uh, obviously, we've discussed as much as I think we could. Um, for number five, um, I would, I would entertain a continuance, um, but I would also entertain a denial on this one, because I do not believe that we will be able to find, um, or make finding number three, which is, um, regarding the character of the neighborhood. Where also, I would continue number six, because we can't meet those findings, but I do believe that those findings could be met.
Okay.
One, one question for Mona. If we vote for a continuance, then we won't be subject to the FPP, or, I'm sorry, wrong. The, what is, which one is the F?
The FCC shot clock rule will still-
Not the FPPC, sorry. (laugh)
No, the Fair Political Practices Commission is not relevant here tonight. However, a continuance will not, uh, stay the shot clock, so we will still be operating a hun- under the a hundred and fifty day, uh, timeline.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, I have a question. You're entertaining the continuance based on, Commissioner Lebig, you're entertaining the, that continuance based on you feel that finding number three hasn't, has yet, yet been met, so what is your, um, recommendation as far as?
Actually, no, no, I, I, I would, if, if the other commissioners so wished to continue number five, I would agree to that.
Okay.
That's what I meant by that. Otherwise, I could also find a denial.
Okay. So, I look to commissioners to my right, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Guerrero.
If it's my turn, I agree with Russ. I, I would like to see these issues resolved that we've talked about, get them in front of us, so we know that this project can go forward, and then we can make a, a better decision. I can make a better decision for myself. I would agree that I think that, uh, I couldn't make findings for number three, so if I couldn't continue this, I would have to ask for it to be denied also. And I think it's better that we continue and try to resolve these issues that we've talked about, and then maybe we can move forward, and we can get a little better, maybe even asking for a little more detail on the plans of how they plan to screen and do stuff like that. But it would make it a little easier for me if I knew we could answer all our questions, and I can't answer them today.
I, I would agree, if, um, we can take a look at having a continuance, and also taking into consideration, um, public comment on, um, you know, the, the aesthetics and, um, other contributions that were made by my fellow planning commissioners on, um, what we can do to im- improve, um, the appearance of the, uh, of the tower.
Okay, so, I guess I would have to, I would like to request a motion for either a continuance or...
You have?
Okay.
The matter is within the discretion of the commission. Should the, should the commission wish to neither reject nor approve the matter tonight, it may continue it. Um, however, based on what I've heard tonight, I, I have formulated a finding in the event that the commission wishes to reject or deny the application, and what I have is that because of the close proximity of the proposed cell tower to adjacent residential properties, the proposed project defeats the purpose and intent of the city's wireless policy, which is to preserve aesthetics, and for those reasons, it, it impairs the integrity and character of adjacent neighborhoods, and finding three cannot be met.
Are we in agreeance with that?
I would still, no, I'd still prefer to continue this item, and I think we have the right to continue it, don't we, Mona?
It's within the purview of the commission to decide whether to approve, deny, or continue it. Again-
I make the motion, we continue this item.
I, I also want to reiterate that I think that there, that there are federal and perhaps our council forces that will have opportunities to weigh in on this after we, we make our decision. So, regardless of up, down, continuance, there, there are other folks who are gonna weigh in on this. I just wanna make that point.
I agree.
I'll second the continuance.
Okay, I have a first, and then a second. Um, I'd like to-
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Austin?
Nay.
Commissioner Olson? Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Commissioner Lebig?
Yes.
Commissioner Galvan? Commissioner Perez?
Nay.
Thank you.
All right, um, this item, um, regarding the Crown Castle conditional use permit application at twelve forty-five Linden Road, um, will be heard at a future planning commission meeting.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to item number six, and, um, do we have any questions or comments, or can I get a motion?
Can, I, I would like to be very clear on this one as well, um, where we were clear on the last one before just going into a motion. Currently, uh, findings one, two, and three cannot be met. Um, finding number one is pending, uh, the same issue as finding number two, is the coverage map. Um, so, coverage map must be provided. Um, also, the arrays on the tree, um, must be provided, and it appears that they're in some drawings, but they're not on the map. Um, so they do need to be on the, the map, and with those, and I'm sure there's some additional details that could be worked on, um, I believe I could make, um, the findings, one, two, and, and three. Um, so, I would, I, I don't wanna motion this without hearing from the commission, but I would be recommending a continuance, um, because currently it would als- it would need to be denied.
Commissioner Austin, do you have any comments? After, okay. Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Guerrero?
Um, I, I agree with Russ. I think also this application was, um, had, had far more gaps in, um, the application, and, uh, would need to have more information. Um, heard some of it tonight. Applicant seems willing to provide the information, would like the applicant, uh, applicant to have that opportunity to do so.
Okay, I have no-
And by move, we continue this item.
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Lebig?
Yes.
Commissioner Galvan? Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson? Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there something you need to read?
Okay. So, um, both mo- both items have been settled. Um, we will continue the item number six.
Yes, that will return to a future planning commission as well.
Thank you. And I lost my agenda.
David, do we have any idea on the date of that future hearing?
Um, not at this time. It, it will, it will not be our next regularly scheduled meeting on, on the seventh. I can say that for certain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have any informal discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Good night, everybody.